Oh, he's good. Good.
It's my Bonnie DeGarry.
No wonder.
So she'll come to your house.
Well, she, I just, I literally get a walk-
Well, you live right by her.
I live right by her.
Oh, okay, she lives over by you?
Yeah.
Bonnie.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
How are you?
Whenever y'all are ready.
What do you think, LaWanna?
You ready?
Today might be a good day.
10:00 AM, right? August 27, 2012? Welcome to... Now, you feel free to answer that if you need to.
I'm handling it up.
Welcome to Commissioner's Court. Cyrus Roehl, Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Dead Shaw here. Commissioner Schindel.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Here.
Carol Sweeney with County Clerk's Office.
Here.
Please stand and join us in opening prayer. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance today as we make decisions for the county. We ask that you be with our family and friends on the road, wherever they may be, and we ask that you be with our troops where they may be. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm done. It's your turn, LaWanna.
Good morning, morning.
Okay. I have 12 different things with several sub-things we need to discuss. And then we'll hopefully be 99.9% through. County Clerk's Office is the first item on my list with the document recording software.
Okay, is that on our list?
That's not in handouts I gave you, no.
Okay.
Y'all received the information previously. What the court needs to address is whether it's going to be outright purchase or monthly lease. Carol?
What was cheaper?
Yes, that would be the decision to make, too. Well, the outright purchase was, I think, $127,000. And what we would pay monthly would be, I can't remember.
Sixty-seven, sixty?
Sixty-seven, sixty. So definitely, if we're going to keep it for several years, it's cheaper to buy it outright. But remember, if we buy it outright, then we're responsible for all of the hardware ourselves. So if a computer breaks, or if we need a new one, that comes out of, that would be out of my budget. If we lease it, they take care of all of the hardware, all of the software, and they replace it every three years, no matter what. So it's kind of like, you know, what happens if you get... You know, we have 15 public stations, public computers. So what happens if five of those are bad and we have to replace them? I mean, it's just, you know, it's one of those things. You've got to outweigh it.
This will discuss the last payment, right?
At the very first time.
Wow. This is the Tyler?
Yes. Yes, correct.
So in other words, how long is the payment? Five years?
Well, if we lease it, it's until we get rid of it.
Or if you lease it, you just lease it.
You lease it, right.
And they take care of everything.
Right.
For sixty-seven, seventy per?
Month. Per month.
But they replace equipment every three years?
So is this computer system going to last five years?
I'd say sixty-seven, seventy times sixty months, that's six-sixty. I didn't figure out. How many months is that to get $127,000 still on it?
Is there a minimum lease on it, Carol?
It might be, it might be the minimum... I don't remember. I don't remember that it said a minimum.
I remember you saying something about maintenance concern. That if we bought it, something about the maintenance. What was that?
We still have to pay a yearly maintenance. If we, even if we buy it, there's a yearly maintenance forever, as long as you have it. I think it was like $9,000 a year.
Rent or lease we have a maintenance?
Rent or lease, yeah. I think it's just included in the rental, isn't it?
Even with the lease, there's given charges for that, too?
For the maintenance? Well, I think it's just included in the, in the monthly payment already.
That's what I'm saying. It's not above and beyond sixty-seven, seventy a month, right?
It'd take 18 months to meet the purchase price. Does this take the place of what we're already doing now, the ACS?
Yes.
So then that ACS is already figured in your proposed budget, right?
Yes.
Which such your microfilming expense in your proposed budget, the $35,000?
It must, it must be because it's not under anything else, even though I don't know that I call it microfilming. And there is the lease purchase also. But again, after that lease purchase, which would be five years plus one more year at a dollar, then we would still be responsible for everything after that.
So if we lease it monthly, they provide all equipment and everything for that lease?
Yes.
Seventy-seven a month. And it would take 18 months to pay that $127,000. So how much is a lease if we purchase it? How much is a lease per month if we purchase it?
It is, well, I don't, I have an annual payment of, per year, $56,301.
That includes the support, the-
Web hosting.
Everything else.
Okay. Wait a minute, I got lost there. If we lease it, what is it per year?
Okay, if we, if we just lease it with no lease-
It's going to be per month, right?
It's sixty-seven, sixty per month.
Per month.
Right. But then, then the lease purchase, which I guess would be the same, is fifty-six, three oh one annually for five years. And then every year after that would be $25,000. For the support, I guess, that's what that's saying. Is that right? A web hosting.
So they charge us $25,000 to support all this equipment per year?
Yes, because you have the software support. You have the web hosting, which means all of our records are online, but we get every, everything made off of that. Disaster recovery, fraud guard.
Listen, I don't know, maybe whatever we, y'all tell me if this sounds good or not. What if we purchase it at $127,000? It takes 18 months. After 18 months, I doubt anything's going to go wrong in 18 months. Then we get the support of $25,000 per year on there. Would be something like that?
Well, you still have to have the support for the software, et cetera, even if you're purchasing-
Which would, I figured if five years, it's $45,000, which would be $172,000 in five years. But in 18 months, would only be, what is it, $13,500, which comes out to $140,500. And that's in 18 months, you'd be $140,000. In five years, if we lease it, we're paying $406,200. With $25,000, if they're willing to come back and support that per year after that, we got three and a half years left. That's $75,87,500. So we're still looking at, you know, we're still saving. When there's $200 and something thousand, that's like $100 and something thousand savings on. I don't know if they would do that. You know what I mean?
Yes, I understand.
See, we're still saving, well, $160,000. I can do the math real quick, but-
Year to year.
No. I was figuring if we buy it outright, $127,000, right? It's not going to go down in 18 months. But we need, we need some kind of support, which is $9,000 per year, which that's only 18 months, which is $13,500. If you add that on that, it would be $140,500. And then if you figure three and a half more years, five years, $25,000, $87,500. Add it to that, it's $227,000. You still save in five years, $406,000. We saved $140,000 per year, $170,000. I don't know. If we purchase it, they'll be able to come back.
This page that I just handed you, copies of, gives you a little more details as far as the software and the hardware. If you, if we don't do the straight purchase, my understanding is we would have to re-license every year. With the straight purchase, we never have to re-license. They'd provide all the hardware, et cetera, to begin with in the straight purchase. But after it goes down, it would be our responsibility.
So it'd be in our benefit to purchase it?
Yeah.
It'd be in the county's benefit?
Right. The county's benefit. We save money.
Then if, and on the plus side of purchasing it, if, say, a year from now, we don't need 15 public terminals and one breaks or whatever, we don't have to replace it, that's, that's on us, then to replace it if we need it.
I see, yeah, I see.
You know what I'm saying? The hardware, we buy the hardware first with the outright purchase is included in that price. And then whatever we need to replace after that is on the county to replace or fix or-
Or just put aside.
Or just put aside.
Sure, because we may not need everything.
Right.
So for leasing, we have better commitment from the company to take care of it?
For the hardware, definitely, yes. They're going to always be the software support, but for the hardware, for the computers and the printers, they will take care of that. But if we buy it, then we just have to rely on computer repairmen.
What have we done in the past, LaWanna? Also, if I purchased it, right?
Actually, what they use now, it's a contract and we lease from its ACS's equipment.
Yes. Everything we have is not ours, all of the computer equipment.
What do we pay now? If you have it in-
Little over $7,000 a month, I think.
Right.
So is this going to be added to that or mixed in there somewhere?
No, that, that will take the place of. That will be doing away with the old. It's just a better product now. It's just an updated product.
Plus, it's more detailed what you can get out of it, and we can earn more back.
We can earn more back, and it has a feature called Fraud Guard, which I explained earlier was any time a document is filed, if somebody signs up for an email alert, like let's say you, Pete, if you, if you sign up for this alert and someone comes and files a document with your name on it, it's going to send you an email alerting you that someone has filed a document with your name on it. You can click on a link and it'll take you to that document. And if it's something you have no knowledge of, then you can begin the process of fraud or, you know, whatever, somebody filing a document.
I like that idea. I like that.
We can offer that to, to the entire county.
I like that idea.
At, at a cost or at no cost, whatever is, is decided on. But it's, it's something that's included in the package.
LaWanna, I'm sorry. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you're our number person, the expert at numbers. What do you recommend would be the most, you know, better for the county?
I would think the straight purchase. Because even if you have a lease agreement, there's no guarantee that costs are going to go up next year on hardware, et cetera.
So it should fluctuate, you know, I mean, it could, it's not, it's not stuck on there for five years?
Well, I haven't actually seen the big contracts, so.
What about the $7,500 that we do now? Is that, does that fluctuate or it just stays at that? So can we get this one? When you say that we buy it outright, this one in five years or whatever, we can always... How long have we had it for, $7,500?
A long time.
Quite a while, since before I was there.
I would guess it's probably been eight, nine years, maybe even 10 that Al was utilizing the ACS. She's increased the number of stations in the last-
That's when they changed everything over?
I personally would go with the straight purchase.
And that's, that's what we need to do. I mean, you know the number. You know what we need to do.
Absolutely.
She knows what she needs, and she's telling us that's what she needs.
And anytime, I don't know if y'all have that same paper that I was looking at, but anytime there's a software change, if we do the straight purchase, anytime there's a software change, we never have to relicense it. They're going to give us the updates forever.
Straight purchase.
All right, next.
Straight purchase is fine.
Next, yeah. Straight purchase, go ahead. Everybody, everybody on the same page?
One down, eleven to go.
Thank you.
Okay, next is special projects and 911, whatever. Previously, we had discussed the salaries and y'all said, for the special projects position, $22,360. For the 911 position, $24,440. The current salary for that position before splitting is $22,612. With a 3% raise, that's $23,290.36. My question is, for the 911 position, are you going to go above the 3% raise where that position, whomever takes it is going to get more than 3% like other county employees are proposed? It would be an 8.08% increase.
Under 911?
From the current salary.
Eight point oh eight.
You're dividing one position into two, and you're going to give it an 8% increase when others are going to increase.
Why have we come up with higher figures?
Let's discuss.
That's what we talked about.
Because one has, one has specific, the 911-
One one you have to be out of the field. One of them you don't. You know what we're discussing.
Believe it with the increase, the more than the 3% for that one side of it.
One's got to do more. You've got to leave it if you're going to separate it. It's this first-
Well, it would still be-
It's going to be the first time it's going to add on it.
Well, even with the 3% raise, it would still be more than the special projects position.
How much, how much would you give?
With the 3% raise, it'd be $23,290.36. And the special projects is set at $22,360.
Oh, so $23,296? In your neck, aren't we?
$930.36 difference. That it would be at a higher rate if they would just the 3% increase.
I want one. It'd be hard.
Correct. Use the 3%?
Everybody else is getting it.
That way everybody else would be fair.
That's right. Tracy!
Okay, so everybody, all five of you are in agreement with that?
Yes, sir. Are you, Paul? He's shaking his head.
Okay, still under that department. That department has been in the past responsible for the road signs. Before we added the position, Sharon had hoped that that would go to Road and Bridge, since it's Road and Bridge's road signs. So is that going to move to Road and Bridge? Or are we going to leave that in special projects, 911?
Now, are we talking about ordering the signs or actually going out there and putting them up?
She makes them.
Which not only is the responsibility need to be decided which department, but then we're going to have to address the cost of road sign materials as well as a sign machine. Because ours is antiquated and there's not parts, parts for repair, et cetera, correct, Sharon?
I think it should be moved to Road and Bridge because they have to go put them up. They know which ones are missing.
I think so.
I agree with-
Big boy, Schindel.
Y'all have, y'all have room in there?
Yeah, we can make room in there. On this deal, on this machinery and stuff, I think on the overall deal, because I did shit on pricing of the tape, what we spend on tape, and then the machine to, to cut the tape and everything for us. I think overall that the guy at Galveston where I get my signs, if I do overall buying from him, the complete sign will wind up. We don't have to make them, don't have to have that extra machine, don't have to be buying that tape. He does it all. And it's cheaper for him to make it than us trying to pay somebody and having a machine and buying the tape.
Where's he at, Jeff?
He's at Galveston. He's, he builds signs. He'll build anything you want. You can put anything on it you want also. There's deals out there. You look for them.
He's at a Galveston, you said?
Yes.
Okay, when you have a sign out or something, you notice one gone, how far, you call it, y'all call it it right away? How fast does he send it?
Within a week, I can have my signs.
Within a week? Are you, are y'all going to wait to have 10 or 15 more? Or is it, y'all going to order one by one? Because I know the-
He said it don't matter if I order 10, if I order one.
It doesn't matter?
Yeah. He says shipping's going to, he works, in other words, you order from him, the shipping is a lot cheaper because he don't charge you that much on the shipping.
Will you imagine that, I'm sorry to ask, I know you have all four precincts now, but what do you imagine a month, how many signs are going to come, 10, 20?
Pretty close. More than that sometimes. We got signs missing right now.
Signs in mailboxes are hot commodities. Don't get a lot of people saying that in mailboxes.
We can put soft signs out there and they don't like them. They're going to run them over. You can put them next to a corner post. They'll take the corner post and all that just to get the sign. We got some signs, we got some signs put up over here. School bus signs we put out. And they pull them out of the ground and lay them over and let them land there first.
I know Jeff always had, you were commissioner, you always had the most problem with signs, right?
Ain't changed.
Hasn't changed.
Who knows what the people up there?
They like signs.
They don't like nobody telling them what they need to do, huh?
That's in the free state of McMillan County. Is that where we got with that one, LaWanna?
So when we get to Road and Bridge, then we'll further discuss that.
Okay.
Item number three. Special counsel fees. Currently in our budget, we have $50,000. Through July, we had spent almost $24,000. What dollar amount to budget there?
I'm going to, I'm going to respectfully request that we leave it the same because we don't know what we have coming into the county. We don't know what we have coming in in contracts. And it's, it's a, that things are put in place properly when, like, again, sent in. And they're done rapidly. We don't have to wait on it. And we need that. We need somebody to be able to lead us in the right direction. To be able to review stuff and tell us, you know, I mean, we can't even get two forms right in this place. We need to be able to get things going in the right direction.
That this consensus of all court?
I think so. How is Diddler Borough employed with the county? Is it year to year or week to week?
Just special counsel?
We have no contract.
I mean, but they're, they're some of the best legal counsel out there. I mean, every, there's a lot of agencies picking them up. And I know they're, they're, they're actually coming up with something that they're going to, Ross will come down and talk to us about, too, that they're working with some University of Texas students. And these, these are law, law students. They're wanting to do some Eagle Ford Shell research. And we're going to get that at no cost to the county or anything else. And it's going to be, I mean, these guys are getting ready to go out in the field. So this is their, you have to do your one last major project to that professor to make yourself like, look like really good. So they have to go out and beat up some trees and beat up some stuff. And Ross, Ross and I talked, and it was something I needed to share with y'all just to get this far. Ross and I, he had talked to me about, you know, you guys have got some major issues. The other counties that we're working for have major issues. And they also work for ACOG. Everybody has major issues. But they're really going to concentrate a lot of stuff on Eagle Ford Shell and just provide it to y'all. Things that they need, you know, it's, it's all supervised by attorneys. These internships are supervised by attorneys. But that'll come at no cost, and that's going to be one of the perks that we're going to have within this year, which I think is really nice.
Okay, so $50,000.
I'd like to leave it there.
That's fine.
Okay, with me, I'm fine.
Okay, the next is the courthouse liaison for Phase Two or the foundation phase?
That's 1A. That's 1A.
Okay, are we going to take that out of bond monies? Or do we need to budget something if, which I assume, I guess, that Lorraine will continue in that same position?
Yeah, we'll have it on agenda Friday. And I have, she's going to do it. I didn't know it would be.
I did. I need it this afternoon.
Okay.
At least a broad roundabout figure. Okay, grant writer for the jail. Is Beto going to be finished before September 31st? So we know whether we qualify or don't qualify or?
Well, in those three contracts we just signed, LaWanna, what it had was, it was the AA contract, then it was Lorraine Daley's, and then it was the amendments, and then Beto's. And I guess the answer to your question is, I don't know. Because we're going to try to get money, but with what Bob Henderson was saying, if we can't get a grant through USDA, because we like to have a grant, but if we don't get a grant, we will probably be able to get money ourselves as a county chief. But he's still working on that grant, so I-
That's my question. How much more in fees do we need for Beto?
And how much have we, I mean, we should know by November.
Well, I have to know by this week.
I know, LaWanna, but how much have we budgeted so far?
I feel like we need to keep him on. I think we need to keep Beto on for something. I don't know.
Because you know what? Even though he's doing the grant part of it, he's helped a lot. I mean, he had a lot of answers to the questions, so.
The, to date expenses to Beto has been $5,644 through July 31st.
Wow.
What did we budget?
We budgeted $40,000.
We budgeted $40,000 and he's only spent $56? Yeah, he's not, he's not, he's very frugal.
Right.
I'd like to leave it in there.
So we need to, we need to dig in there for a note.
Can we leave $15,000 if he doesn't use it? That'd be down from the 40. I don't think he'll use it. But if, if we have to start one of USDA meetings, like they did at Funko and Stockdale, he'll have to attend every one of those meetings, and his cost will go up once we have to attend those meetings. What do y'all think there?
$15,000 is fine. I don't see him using more than that. And if he does, and we need him, we have to amend it.
Let's put $15,000 in, LaWanna. Y'all okay with that, Tracy, Paul?
Okay, next is a page that I had given you, which is the dues and donations. These are budgetary contributions that we make annually. Amounts on the far right-hand side are what have been requested by the entities.
Water, rent, and court tolling?
That's their request, yes. There's also Norma's House written in on the bottom. That's the battered and abused women, children's shelter in Seguin. Attached to those figures is what other entities have given or said they're going to do.
I want to interject there for just a second because I think that's a really good program. But that's not the WOOPI thing in Seguin. That's the Gonzalez Children's Shelter.
Of Gonzalez.
Yeah, they were new, and I'd never heard of them. And I used to work with these people. And we threw out some names with, that we worked every day with, and they had no idea who I was talking about, and that kind of scared me. So I'm not, I'm thinking that they're so new to the program, I don't know how much they have on the ground or that they will be able to provide for us. Because obviously, we want these needs met. But we also have the Advocacy Center, and we have MHMR, and we have other programs that we can use. And I was just, I just had some concerns that, that we hadn't, you know what I'm saying? That we hadn't used these people. And then I looked at what their people were donating in the city of Gonzalez. I sent that to you, $3,000, Wilder 15, Nixon 18, City of Shiner $2,000. Shiner must have some money. And Gonzalez County, $1,800.
All right, well, I need to have, so now we'll find out.
All that beer they made.
What can we do to make them try that?
See, I don't know. I just, I'm just, I felt. I mean, they said that they had started two children from Parnes County. Did they, did they?
But they were here. We have other programs, too, right? Everybody looks like they donate to this right around it, right?
It looks like they're more of a Gonzalez County sort of-
Right, they get the greatest use of it.
Program. I don't feel like they've expanded enough here for us to know that much about. I mean, these are still services we can get through Child Protective Services, through Advocacy.
Foundation is zero at this point?
At this point in time, yes, ma'am. I don't know how these guys feel about it. I just-
I don't mean anything bad about it or anything. I feel for it, but I mean, I wish we'd been helping everything. But it looks like it's more centralized area over here around them. I think, you know, they're reaching out for help, of course, everybody does, but-
I mean, if they were letting us know, you know, like when they were coming into the county, I mean, obviously not letting us know, we don't need to know if they're giving them what they're doing, but to let us know exactly what service they provided, I was, I understood that it was a counseling service, maybe, or... I was still confused at the service that they provided after their presentation. provided after their presentation.
We have other services that cover this.
Child Protective Services mandated by law, and they will, they will fill all those requirements.
So that was outright?
That's just my thoughts, y'all might want to do it, y'all might want to try it, I don't know what to do with it.
No.
Okay, so the only other one on here with an increase is the Solomond Conservation District. They had presented information which y'all all received earlier, three, four meetings ago, as far as documenting their request.
You cannot, you got them on 2,000, won't you?
No, they went up to 20, we went up to 22,000 on them last year.
We went, okay, so we have, we have 220,000.
Should that be 20, 22, 22?
20, 22, 22.
Yeah, but you have 20, 20, 22, that's what I think it is.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Does Solomond have their state budget cut?
Yes, they've had their state budget cut the last three, nine years.
Well, it's important, I'm not, not opposed to giving them an increase, you said denied 8,000?
Correct.
Well.
I think that's too much, because we would give it to the Historical Commission, they requested it to.
Yeah. What is leaving the odd services?
Yeah, what sort of, what, like this year, what have we, I'm sure I'm putting you on the spot, I'm just thinking, you know.
Well, it's not necessarily the county, but the citizens of the county.
Right, with the citizens.
Flood control, flood line development.